All right, it is Tuesday, December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, seven thirty PM Eastern Standard Time, six thirty PM Central, where I am. So uh, see a call to order. Uh, there's myself. Uh, is Bob Shabbat there? I can't see.
Yeah, I am.
Okay, so Bob Shabbat's there. Uh, Andy, I see Andy. Doug's there. Becca's there. Bill Benel and I'll seat Michael Johansson for Joe Hall, who's not going to be with us tonight. So uh, let's see, no, no applications for receipt tonight, no public hearings. New business request from Hall Forest Products to perform selective timber harvest with Wilford Farms Conservation Easement. What what's going on with that, Mike?
So I believe that Austin is here remotely and he should be able to unmute.
Oh, I see him. Austin, you good? You ready?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, everyone. Good evening. Uh, yeah, so my name's Austin Harmon with Whole Forest Products, um, and we are proposing a timber harvest, which just last night was approved by the Town of Wellington Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Commission, uh, overall for the property. Uh, we as well watched the conservation easement area of the property with the Wellington Conservation Commission, uh, shared some thoughts and had some back and forth as to recommendations and such, and uh, that we were finally able to get their agreement with some recommendations for the conservation easement portion of the property. Where we intend to harvest roughly thirty to forty percent of the basal area, AKA the volume of the trees within the conservation easement. Um, one of the major things we had to outline with the Conservation Commission, according to the easement itself, was that overall, the conservation easement can never be heavily cut as it's written within the easement deed and such itself. So with that being said, we are trying to uh, cut mainly unhealthy, diseased, and poorly formed individuals, but we're trying to leave trees of shade tolerance or intermediate shade tolerance, meaning that they're able to survive not with full sunlight. So some shade or full shade even. Uh, this can be seen in species such as sugar maple, red maple, black birch, yellow birch, uh, American beech, eastern hemlock, et cetera. Uh, but we would still be leaving a vast variety of trees within the conservation easement area uh, by species. So we try to leave as many as different kinds of species of trees as possible to create a more unique biodiversity habitat, as well as maintain proper wildlife habitat for as many species as possible. Uh, with this harvest, there is one stream crossing, um, and I should also mention that this was done by our company ten years ago with the Wellington Planning and Zoning Commission's approval and all that such back then as well. So we would still be using the same stream crossing, which is an existing stream crossing and was previously used by us, which would be supported with temporary timber bridge mats to go over these streams. So nothing would be going into stream itself. We would just be spanning it with the bridge mats. Um, and then at the end of the harvest, we would plan to use seed, hay, and/or water bars at the next feasible season or time to put such in after harvest to help maintain soil stabilization and help prevent erosion into the stream and wetland areas. Uh, for the vernal pool, which is that little block to the very west, that is not a wetland. I just labeled it as one on the map for the purpose of ease, but it is indeed a big vernal pool, which was confirmed by the Conservation Commission. We would be leaving a full fifty-foot buffer around that vernal pool per the Town of Wellington's Forestry Regulations. Um, in that vernal pool buffer, there would be no trees cut. However, I did make it clear with the Conservation Commission and they agreed it is okay. If some of the slash, so treetops and other unmerchenable portions from the trees were cutting around the buffer would be left within that fifty-foot area. Um, and that would actually help stop or prevent any sort of erosion into the vernal pool, which in my opinion, won't be any sort of issue as long as we target this harvest for a right time of year. So ideally, when we have more frozen conditions or uh, more dry conditions. So realistically, it would be better to be done midwinter or midsummer or other dry or frozen times of the year, really as the seasons vary, as we've seen the other day. Um, for the rest of the wetland, which is the bigger portion to the south of the conservation easement area, we would be leaving a twenty-five to thirty-foot buffer around that stream and the wetland, uh, which isn't all required by the forestry regulations, but was per request of the Conservation Commission that we leave a bit of a buffer. Their concern is that um, there are some invasive species present mostly around the wetland areas of the site, uh, mostly being Japanese barberry, as well as a little bit of multiflora rose. So their worry was that if we were cutting too much up to the wetland edge or too much around it, um, that we could actually help that invasive species spread. So in the conservation easement area of the property, we're leaving a twenty-five to thirty-foot buffer from the wetland edge and the stream, uh, besides the stream crossing area, where we may need to cut a few trees just to make the crossing itself passable with the operation, with the heavy machinery.
Any uh, any questions or comments from the commission?
Uh, yeah, I have a couple of questions. Uh, um, Austin Harmon, is that his name? Uh?
Yes.
Uh, any relation to Mark Harmon? Go on.
Say it again, sorry.
You know, any relation to Mark Harmon?
Um, out of where?
Oh, I don't know. Guy used to work for Whole Forest Products way back when.
No, I think I know Mark Harmon, not around here, at least.
Who's going to be doing the actual cutting? Is it, it will be Hull employees or you usually subcontract that, right?
Yes, correct. We subcontract those to a variety. Uh, typically, I think right now we're using about eight or so subcontractors out of our direct operating area out of Pomfret, uh, east of the Connecticut River, Western Rhode Island, South Central Mass. I, we have about eight different subcontractors. Um, I do have one specific subcontractor in mind. His name is Matt Lapri out of Exeter, Rhode Island. Uh, we've been using that fifteen years and although I've only been with the company two and a half years full-time and two years part-time before that, over that time, he is without a doubt the best subcontractor, in my opinion, that we employ. Uh, more so just because he's very cautious about what he's doing in the woods and he's one of the few guys that would actually call me with a potential issue or really just bugging me with a, putting a bug in my ear about something before it even turns into an issue, uh, just to make sure that he's playing it right, that he's following the rules and that he's sticking to the game plan.
Yeah, thank you.
Of course.
I just wanna kind of, I'm gonna show this on the screen so that everybody can see it hopefully to just confirm and bring it all around. I know he, Austin touched on it briefly. Try to make this bigger. So when this subdivision was originally approved and the conservation easement was placed on the property, the the details of the conservation easement, the language, which is this document, which is in the packet, it's like twelve pages. You'll see uh, in the section called Exceptions, number two and three, uh, which, here we go. It says, "The grantee acting through its planning commission or its successor shall upon written application of the grant or permit the removal of dead trees and dead brush from said premises." And then it says under number three, basically the same thing for um, the pruning and thinning of live trees. So because you folks required the conservation easement initially, you have the authority to permit these activities. The the um, the timber harvest was approved by the, in the Wetlands Commission last night, but uh, so that applies to the whole property. Without approval from you guys, they can't enter that portion that was shown in, in orange. So just to kind of hopefully sum it up. And they need to be able to access the conservation. You have the area within the easement, they need to access that in order to conduct their they can't just ignore it. They wanted to cross it, right? Is that what I'm understanding? So Austin will stop me if I'm incorrect, but there's kind of two, two different things they're gonna request. One is the actual thinning and cutting within the easement, which is the orange area. Um, let me show this so that Walter can see.
So it was thirty, it was thirty to forty percent of the volume of the trees in the easement, correct?
Yes, that was correct, and that was uh, recommended by myself as well as uh, gosh, I can't remember her name. I want to say your name was Jackie from the Conservation Commission. Uh, she is well as a Connecticut state licensed forester. I'm not sure if she's on your folks' payroll as a forester, or she just has that as a, you know, let's just say an additional license, just because why not? Um, but she is well agreed with me that that conservation easement portion of the property definitely could use a thirty to forty percent removal. Um, and that's kind of a rough guide, you know, it really overall, we're gonna be cutting thirty to forty percent. There might be one area with spectacular oak regeneration, which is, I'm sure a lot of you folks know oak regeneration in particular needs abundant sunlight to actually work its way into the forest canopy and start contributing as a bigger part to the forest system itself. Um, if you create oak regeneration and then never open it up properly, that'll eventually just get shaded out and die off and all that hard work that the trees and the other companies, other folks in the woods put into it growing are now wasted. So there are some areas where if there is a lot of great oak regeneration, we would open up that small acreage a lot more. Uh, but alternatively, we would be leaving more trees in an area adjacent to it. So you would still average at that thirty to forty percent removal overall. Um, and a couple other things I agreed with and the Conservation Commission recommended were that we still left a fair amount of dead standing trees, uh, so dead standing wood snags as well uh, for wildlife habitat, mainly for that of saparzilik species, uh, which are any animal and insect species that require some sort of standing dead wood for one or more stages of their life cycles. This mostly applies to beetles and other bugs, uh, but also their predators and animals that use them as a food source, more so woodpeckers, and I'm sure some other birds I'm not too aware of. Um, so there are some special conditions written into the letter. Mike, do you have that letter by any chance?
I do. Um, the narrative?
Yeah, should be the Conservation Commission's letter to you folks.
Um, let me, let me, let me. I have that. Let me just grab it. It gives part of the timber harvest app.
I got a question, like, was that part of the conservation easement, part of the logging that happened ten years ago too?
Yes.
How did it recover, out of curiosity, in that ten years?
Uh, when I wasn't, I wasn't here when the uh, the group from the commission went out. It was, it had regenerated, it was like the rest of them.
Yeah.
The forest. The idea there was to have that area surrounding the wetlands and the vernal pool uh, kind of set aside to protect the area that surrounds it.
Yeah.
And just have the, have the ability to have input how that was managed around the wet areas.
Okay.
Um, and that all came about when that property was subdivided and sold probably around twenty years ago.
Been curious?
Yeah, and that's kind of part of the process, you know. He's mentioning about insects and woodpeckers, things like that. Woodpeckers, a lot of times create the cavities or natural cavities. Yeah, flying squirrels, you know, things like that, that inhabit those spaces. Um, and with woodpeckers, they utilize those holes all year round. It's definitely not just for nesting, but every night when they roost, they they have their favorite hole or birdhouse where they will spend the night all the time. So it's uh, that's the idea of leaving some of the standing dead wood. I mean, it's one of those things that's like, oh, that'd be pretty nice for firewood because it's, it's your eye, but it's important to leave some of those uh, that standing dead wood and snags to, you know, that same purpose. And then, I have to say, you know, they've been really good about um, coming to terms what we wanted and saying, yeah, that'll, that'll work for us too. So there's no, you know, no red flags at all. It was.
Yeah, of course. Thank you for outlining that. Um, yeah, obviously what we're trying to do, you know, is work with everybody. Um, obviously the landowner, you know, yeah, do they technically own the property? Sure, but they have an easement read out to it into you folks' name. Um, and therefore, we obviously wanted to go through the proper channels, the Conservation Commission and the Planning and Zoning Commission, um, since you folks do have, let's say, a piece of the pie per se. So of course, we're willing to work with you however we need to. Um, this is just our proposal that we initially went through first with the Conservation Commission. Uh, I believe it's roughly the same outline as the procedure is done about ten years ago. However, I wasn't here ten years ago, so I can't go into specifics too much. Uh, but I can say it was definitely left in good standing as a property and as a long-term forest with wildlife habitat opportunities and uh, buffer and water air protection and such on the area there as well. Um, one thing I could note, um, from walking the property, I forget if it was within the easement itself or just to the landowner's property north of the easement. Uh, there was some public recreation, I believe, from those apartment complexes to the very northwest corner. Um, so I'm not sure if they had anything on the easement property, but I did see some old tarps and, you know, somebody with a bow and arrow target out there and such like that. Uh, but I didn't really GPS that location to see its proximity to the easement itself. But we're willing to work with whoever we obviously need to from the town, what entities has needed um, to make an agreeable solution.
Any further questions or comments from the commission?
No, the only, the only comment that I would make uh, is that um, Paul's been uh, easy to work with, you know, Austin has uh, or kind of hand in hand with the Conservation Commission. So, you know, what uh, what you see with the uh, what's presented to us tonight, it's all good. Uh, there's, there's no red flags and, you know, like you say, Austin's worked uh, very nicely with us uh, during this whole process.
Now, I certainly appreciate him going through the proper channels and following the process as well, so. All right, so uh, see, we want to make a, a motion to uh, approve this request from uh, Whole Forest Products.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you, Austin.
Wonderful. Thank you all. Have a good rest of your night.
You as well. All right, brings us to uh, item number two on uh, under new business, election of officers. So I, I can uh, I can express my interest in, in uh, being chairman, uh, still, any, anyone else?
I'm, I'm good with your choice.
What's that?
I'm good with your choice.
Okay, so that means we need a vice chairman. If, if that's the case, so who's interested in uh, in that?
I'll throw my hat in.
I'm looking over at Bob.
I'll throw my hat in.
Okay. How about a secretary? Rebecca, Bill, somebody, Doug? Well, Doug, Doug's our town treasurer and Andy's a selectman, so.
Secretary doesn't have to do too much. Usually, sometimes sign, sign the mylaws if they ever, we ever get mylaws.
That's usually if everybody else isn't available. Like, when I was secretary years ago, I had to run a meeting when the chairman and vice chairman weren't there during the Loves uh, thing. That's rare.
Does happen.
So we have any interest?
Somebody's gotta do it.
How about you, Andy?
Yeah, I'll be secretary as well. Nobody else is gonna do it. And I think it looks like we're all running unopposed. It's a short, short campaign cycle.
Yeah, really.
All right, so we, we good with the choices? Nobody else interested in either of these positions? Any of them?
No door knocking.
No door knocking?
Well, congratulations, everyone.
How about that?
Same logic, keep their hands down.
All right, so uh, we got that out of the way. That was official enough, Mike?
I, I would say so. There was no discussion on anything other than the slate proposed, so.
Okay.
You want to make it official? I can ask the secretary to cast one ballot for unopposed offices.
I suppose we should make a formal motion, right?
Yeah, we can do that. Who wants, who wants to make the motion?
Oh, I did. That's right among the ballots.
I move that we cast one ballot for all unopposed offices and elect uh, hold on, I'm gonna get the names right. Walter Percellis, chairman. Bill Benella's, oh, duh, Joe, nah.
You got it. You're doing great, Bob.
Shabbat is vice chair and Andy Marco as secretary.
Oh, suburb.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we got that out of the way for a while.
Eliminate my fumble, please.
All right, uh, how about a, uh, adoption of bylaws?
Bylaws.
That's item number three under new business, so.
Yep, I read them. They seem thicker than the last one. They aren't. I didn't see anything in the premise. And I, oh, I, so the one question that came about at the last meeting was about removal of members, what did never show. Right. So regular members or full members, because they're elected, cannot be removed. Um, that would be it's a sort of a whole separate issue and that's to have a board commission, but there are provisions for alternates that don't show to be removed by the Board of Selectmen. Um, because that's, those are appointed, so the Board of Selectmen appoints and therefore they can basically unappoint. Um, but we can't uh, do anything about regulars who are elected. So it's good to get elected.
Does that apply to like a, a regular member that was appointed? Like, if someone resigned and someone was appointed in between election cycles?
Yeah, the only, the only thing that it wouldn't apply to was just alternates.
Okay.
So anybody that's a full member, either appointed or elected, can't be removed for lack of participation.
Okay.
Interesting.
It is interesting.
That, that was reviewed recent, you know, in the last couple of years, there was a member on another board who essentially moved out of town and then couldn't actually fill the position until he or she indicated in writing that they were basically withdrawing from the seat, because you can't actually forcibly, forcefully remove them.
But you can't really participate, though, if you're no longer a resident of the town and a town planning and zoning board.
I know, and that was the issue, is that they were arguing he was no longer a resident and I guess it was quite a mess.
Yeah, it was.
I don't know who worked for what board, but that's what I was told. For me. All right. That was the only thing that I did, I thought about last time. Wait, we put the time in ten thirty, that's good.
Well, Article seven, kind of, it's a good thing to have in there, so people don't expect that they can get dropped to the side and have a conversation about something that's uncoordinated.
We're only one.
On the last page.
Oh, last page.
Article seven. Convent.
Yep.
With the warehouse, that started to be an issue.
Yes. Yeah, I've said before, this, even though it's a bunch of pages, this does not change, this just codifies what you're already doing, the process you already follow, the obligations you already.
Yeah, exactly.
It's just puts on paper sort of the standards that you conduct these meetings with every day, just so that there's clarity and that it doesn't seem like the commission has developed this process. So when people don't like the process, they think it's sort of been.
Right, that's right. There's, there's some.
It should be, it should be on paper.
It should be, yeah.
It's transparent having it on paper and people can see it.
It's a good idea. Mike, you think we should look at three point five? A full, a full seven regular member board must be present before election of officers can take place? I want to amend that. That's a good one. I think it's the same, that's the same for uh, zodiac changes too, right? Uh, that would be super majority. This is saying basically all full members. It's kind of hard to do in this day and age. That's a good point.
We did, we, you just, you would have been in violation of that right now.
Well, thank God. We don't have seven full members. Right.
Well, the, the only person missing tonight is uh, Joe Hall.
And I'm not, yeah, I'm not even sure if he's been sworn in or not. I have to check that. Um, go ahead. But the second paragraph, what does that say? Oh, with a majority vote. So you still need the seven. All right, so we can tweak that. I mean, like last, at the last meeting, we deferred election of officers because you felt like there weren't enough people here.
Oh, there were, there were less, there were less people than tonight.
Yeah, right, right. So we can modify that. I mean, we can remove it or you can, you can include something if you want to have it be a substantial number of members, or like I said, or we can take out. I mean, the, the next paragraph goes on to say you need at least four. Uh, but that's just the majority. It's not saying anything that's not would be required. Well, who are we missing? We're missing Joe.
Joe.
Joe. Joe's the only one?
Yes.
Because Bill now is fully seated.
Bill is a full member.
We have an alternate vacancy. But we have a larger vacancy. And the Ford refers to nomination.
And, and, and we also have uh, an alternate seated in, in uh, in Joe's place tonight.
That's true.
Right.
But does that count as? But does that count as? Oh, that's I.
That's a good point.
I I, then that. Maybe you should say to include that's full seven members to include any seated alternates.
That would probably be one.
That would cover that up and clarify, because you're saying to me, if you said, oh, seven full members.
What if you just took?
The alternate, even though he's seated.
What if you just took out regular?
Wait, what if we just modified to say seven members?
Because seated, elected, elected, alternates, appointed alternates have all the rights and duties.
There you go. That's a good, that's a good idea.
Regular kind of makes it sound like you're not seated, you know, for for an absentee.
Yeah.
I wonder if that, is it that simple?
Just strike the regular?
Strike the regular.
Seven members of the board shall be seated before election of officers.
Those are good observations.
Cause can you imagine if we were in the scenario where we had somebody that was one of our members that wasn't present? And they were elected and they don't show up? And and you'd you'd never be able to do this.
I think we have elected people that have sent general.
It shows you when you get volunteered, when you're not there. Who they gotta talk about first that was not there?
The only other thing that I just thought of, and I hate to push these out again, if, I don't think I. Should I reference the training requirements in the statute? Now, I don't even, that may not have been on the books when we.
Yeah, that's a delicate thing.
I can just reference the statute and not say shall obtain this many hours, but.
Yeah, like a hyperlink to whatever the latest statute is, that would have been a real, something hard-wired.
Okay, so I will figure out the best place to put that and reference that language.
And that that training is yearly, correct, Mike?
So. It was for this year and then it changes moving forward. So if you were, if you did your training this year, you now only need to do it once per term. Once you get into the hopper, everybody that was appointed was in place previously, the the assumption is January first, you've got your training. As of January first, you then only need to re-up once every term. Um, if you're new, no, once every five years or whatever your terms are. It used to be every other.
Six-year term, isn't it?
Yeah, so if you have the six-year term, then you don't have to do it every year. Once you get to that cycle, so they they dialed it back.
Alright, so you're gonna make those changes? Is this gonna be on our next agenda, Mike?
Sure. Yep, I will do that.
And we we can move that to the, uh, when when is our next meeting, anyway? January second?
That's the next one.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess uh. Twenty twenty-four meeting count schedule, the meeting dates didn't make it on, but it is, that is part of. The packet, um. I don't think we did that at the last meeting. I didn't put that onto the agenda. Um, but one of the things that we'd like to get finalized so that we can. Get everything posted and on the website, et cetera, is the twenty twenty-four meeting dates.
We had that on the last weekend.
Did we?
Yeah, twenty twenty-four regular meeting dates, that was under new business from the twenty first of November.
Okay. I, I think we did, we did on the other. Yes, that was.
Alright, we're all set then.
Yes, sorry.
Alright, which no unfinished business tonight. Item G, approval of minutes. Do we have any minutes to approve tonight? I don't see the date.
Yeah, I I didn't get them up to the clerk in time for the agendas. Can't approve them the next meeting.
Alright. Item H, correspondence, uh, Prague referral comments.
So I included in the package just so that you can see them, there's nothing, uh, no action required and nothing that I think. Is really overly applicable, um, these are just the amendments being proposed by uh, towns within the Prague region. Um. So there's a couple from East Granby, Bloomfield, Ellington, Columbia and South Windsor. Um, a lot of these are the child care amendments that we made. Um, some others regarding drive-throughs, et cetera, so. The, as we get them, I'm just putting them on here so you can see and and uh, what everybody else is doing. There's no action taken unless there's something on here you're still passionate about and you want the commission to comment.
Okay. Alright, brings us to uh, item I, public participation. It's for items not listed on the agenda. Anyone from the public? It looks a little empty in that person there in the public. Anyone online?
There's nobody online.
No public participation tonight, then uh. Item J, staff report and discussion, River Road lots of update.
So I just. Try to make sure that I touch on this, you know, periodically, we are, um. I don't know, we're probably at a ninety-five or ninety-eight percent plan set, percent plan set. We're working through some of the last comments from DOT, um, and then we'll go through basically final review with Prague and 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 go out to bid. Um, so we've got the plans pretty well tightened up. Um, and we're just working on, uh, there's a couple of minor. Minor comments related to some of the islands and moving one of the islands in front of the school a bit further. South, um, so that vehicles and large trucks that might be coming out of. Penny Hill can make that left and head south and they don't have any interference, so. We're finishing that up. The plan is to bid it this winter so that we can hopefully construct this coming uh, season. Um, so we've got to get the uh, easement or acquisition process started. Uh, for a couple of properties and we're gonna try to move that forward.
Okay, item two, twenty twenty-four commission goals.
So I I put that on there just to, I mean, we've had a bit of a whirlwind over the last twelve months with some applications between the warehouse and the S D Z and. Accessory dwelling units, more occupations, we we've kind of run through a lot of different things and. So we're now sort of in the process of codification. We're gonna get that feedback hopefully in the next couple of months as far as any issues that they see with the regs, whether they be minor or substantial. Um, so I I didn't know, um, if there was any priority items or anything that. Um, the commission had on their mind as far as stuff that we should really focus on and tackle. Um. Or not, uh, but I just wanted to, as we can, things are a little bit slow right now and. Before we have some other crazy potential application, if there's things that. Sort of strike you as as stuff we should start dealing with, um, wanted to make sure we planned for that.
Would would it be worthwhile if we uh, plan to touch base with the economic development folks just to. Get a sense of uh, what they're up to with their study, uh, and what uh. Things they may be working on behind the scenes.
That that would, that would be a good thing.
Would be a very good thing. Yeah, and and so we, the Board of Selectmen did award a contract for the strategic plan. Um. Earlier this month, um, and so we're working now with E D C to get a meeting together. Uh, in January to sort of figure out what that schedule looks like and how that's gonna all kind of unfold, so. Once we get that taken care of, it probably would make sense. I know that they were hoping that boards and commissions would be involved in the process. Or to finance, planning and zoning, conservation, whatever, um, so that should dovetail. With them kicking that off, so um, I can mention that at the, at our January meeting with E D C and try to figure out how to. Bring both groups together.
Okay.
I think that's very smart, because I think one thing that we don't exercise that muscle very much.
That's right.
We react to applications, but we don't, we're not very, I don't think we're active enough in the actual. What do we want the town to be, you know, I, I have this idea, like, I I keep reading, I'm I'm in, I I like light rail, so I just like paying attention to that. And once in a while, it comes up with a proposal of running a rail, passenger rail, from New London to Boston, you know, following the old. C S X track that goes that way. So it's like, okay, wouldn't it be fun to have an artist concept of what a. A passenger rail terminal would look like in West Wellington? There used to be, there used to be passenger rail terminal Depot Road in South Wellington. There was passenger rail in West Wellington, there was one in Stafford, this is back in in this last century, and I know, it's it's old school. But wouldn't it be sort of fun to say, okay, let's say you wanted to do that, what would you have to do? And and what if you wanted to do a bulk of a bulk brick rail terminal in West Wellington? Where where that central, I forget what they call themselves now, where the where the diner is and everything. What would we have to do? Of course, we know there's not enough land there, we know there's not enough water, we, we know there's a lot of problems, but just conceptually, what would it take? And it would just be, I think those would be good ways of exercising our muscle of planning. If we know the conservation development, uh, that the P O C D says grow the corridor of Route thirty-two. Eighty-four, you know, eighty-four, if we still believe in that, then let's war game that. What would that look like? So when a warehouse comes up, we go, yeah, you know what, we already looked at that. Now, like Bobby and I talked about water use, it's not, it's not a metric that we really wanna land on, say. You know, when we, when they say they need eighty thousand gallons a day, that's gonna make it not a viable plan for us just on that. One metric alone, and I don't know, I think it might be fun, I don't know how to do it. I don't really know how to go forward with that, but I think it might be worthwhile to. Think about it and find a way to be better planners about what we might think. Could happen, and if it does come up, we already have some answers sort of in our. Pocket, too.
I think, I think that that is a big part of what the strategic plan.
Yeah, probably.
Because the the focus, the intent is to take what feedback we get from the community, but also look at. Where we are and where we as the town wanna go from a fiscal standpoint, and try to marry that together with what. Is a logical, the consultant will call it a development program, so as part of the plan, he's gonna. Assess. One or two, I think, development program concepts to show you in real numbers. If you're here and you wanna get to there, like, here's some ways to do it, so I think that. Through that process, which will involve public engagement and 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 assessment of market and numbers, you might actually see what some of those concepts are and. Maybe, um, one of the things that we can do is facilitate a discussion with the consultant and this commission so that. He is aware of some of the thoughts you have as he plans out. Because it wouldn't make much sense for him to work with the E D C to develop something that's in complete conflict. But at the same time, the focus of that plan is not a blue sky document P O C D, it's a reality check. The the town wants this, the the budget wants that, and the market wants that. Which is none of what the P O C D really.
Well, one of the things I think a study like that would show, it would. Try to get to the bottom of what these businesses' business plan is, you know. We may, the. Population in Wellington may want that particular type of business, but if. Our population is too small to fit their mob.
Never support it.
That's right. Yeah, like we said, why can't we have Whole Foods where Santilli's used to be? Cause Whole Foods isn't gonna go there. Cause there's enough profit in it for them, so it's not likely to happen.
Well, and it's not any different than the folks with the solar array. Talking to.
Which book?
Two or three, you know, up like.
Oh, on Ruby.
Yeah, it's the T A, talking to potential. Builders or renters there for their.
Right, right.
Retail, saying that, well, they didn't feel that Wellington had a population to support what they needed. You know, so it's.
Right.
That's the major.
Right.
Thing that people have to realize, you know, you may want, but what you're gonna get. Is maybe headed a hundred and sixty degrees in the opposite direction.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we hear that a lot, what people are saying, why can't we have, why can't we have ice cream shops and all these, because. When they do have them, they go out of business because nobody patronizes them, so.
It's uh, yeah, it's. You have to double it.
Well.
But having that conversation with the, with the consultant too would be, would be good.
Yeah, let's get in there early so we can.
And, you know, regarding the S D Z, which right now, as it sits is, you know, just to sort of recap, we.
Right.
Went away from the moratorium and basically dismantled the reg so that it's. Has no operational value but is on the books, so, um. It, for something like that, it feels like it wouldn't make sense to really try to put forward an effort to revise it. Ahead of the strategic plan, because if if we have a strategic plan and we all agree on what the findings are, then. This, the S D Z should put a both thumb on the scale for those particular, so we kind of need that.
Oh, we need to focus our energy on something that's viable.
Right.
As opposed to something that may not come, go anywhere, once the study is done.
Right. But it might not be necessary, like, yeah, might not even be.
Now, with that study, Mike, will it take a look at the viability, like when we talked about the village district of different things that were. People were talking about there and everything as well?
Um, I'm not sure, I think that, that they're gonna evaluate. Some, some actual potential developments rather than just. Make sort of broad statements about.
Okay.
Mission should allow retail or something, because I think the the hope is that if they show. Real projects on paper and how that equates to jobs and revenue and whatever else, that it'll be easier for people to either. Endorse and support or not. Um. But, you know, that stuff need, will will be refined a little bit once it gets kicked off.
Is the commentary that was provided uh, during the public hearings for the warehouse, is that getting, is that being provided as. Uh, potential parameters for this tris, for this strategy?
Like the public comments?
Yeah, I mean, there were some as far as like the square footage size based on what infrastructure we have and water usage and.
I don't.
Cause I wouldn't want this, I wouldn't want the consultant to come back, come up with the same idea, it's like.
Right, right, exactly.
Let's build a, a four hundred thousand square foot warehouse.
Yeah.
Right next to the highway.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know, I mean, so we have reviewed with him that that whole process, so he understands that that was. You know, asked and and denied, um, so. I I'm, you know, I'm not really sure, we'll have to talk with him about that, because in, you know, the industrial zone, that's a viable use. So like, I don't know if he's gonna pick out from uses that are allowed, or if he's gonna look at the market and say, these are the most viable. Market-supported uses that you're likely to see, and this is what it would look like if they actually showed up.
Because I was hoping that some of that stuff would almost find its way in the appendix of our P O C D. I mean, some of them, some of the people put together some.
Yeah.
Terrific papers.
Right.
You know, as far as. And for that, just to get not, get lost, it would be unfortunate, you know?
Yeah, we, I mean, we certainly obviously have everything and and it, and it, you know, I mean, whether it be through a P O C D amendment. If there's a pertinent section of the P O C D that you wanted to amend. If there's a pertinent section of the P O C D that you wanted to amend to be more reflective of what happened and include some of those things. Or through the consultant, just being aware of that and, and including that as part of his. Fact finding and, and review prior to making recommendations. Uh, we can. We can talk about that with him and see where he thinks that best fits. We have, I don't know if he mentioned sort of the, the, uh, program types or kind of what he was going to evaluate. But I'm gonna see if we can just have him, uh, spend some time here with the group so that we can.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I, I agree with Doug. If somebody comes out, oh yeah, a two million square foot warehouse is the way to go, uh. Yeah, I think we know how that'll land.
I, and, and we actually, when talking about this with the EDC and working on the R P and the project and, and all of these, all these steps. Sort of go back and forth. If. If the parcels that you have in the zoning that's in place. Support and allow a warehouse and the market allows a warehouse. Then he should evaluate that and the town, the town has to make a decision on, do we just amend the zoning regs to just not allow that use? Or do we consider it because that's what the market supports? So. There's a rationale behind evaluating to see what that looks like. Maybe it's not a million square feet, but maybe it's two hundred and fifty thousand or a hundred thousand or whatever. But on the same side, if something was so widely contested. Is, should it be entertained at all? I, I don't really answer to that, but I know it's something that we've kicked back and forth.
Well, I have to, we have to realize that there are several large parcels that are zone D I.
Right.
So, you know, there, that's something that we are, we may have to contend with at some point. Oh.
Yeah, so I, I think it's all important and, um. Certainly worth talking about. So, uh, once we get everything started, I'll, I'll find some time for him to, um. Come here and we can talk with him and.
Alright, that sounds like a good plan. Alright, anything else? Anyone have any further comments or? It is seven twenty-three P M. Meeting adjourned. Happy holidays, everyone.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.